Councilmember Wade, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I invite you to pray with me. Lord Jesus, I thank you that you have ordained the establishment of government for the good of humanity. I thank you for our elected officials and that you've granted them authority and appointed them to this work. I thank you that when they govern with justice, they're a blessing to people and they help our community flourish and thrive. I ask that the leaders in this room would receive from us, under their authority, the respect and honor they deserve, and that they would seek our welfare in addition to our consent to govern. I pray, or I praise you that in the Bible, you command people to pray and intercede for all those who are in high positions, that they might be wise in order to lead well. So I pray for these leaders, that they would be not only wise, but also humble, with hearts that truly care for those under their authority, that they would serve with virtue and courage because they are accountable to those under them, and also because they are accountable to you, the highest and greatest authority who is over them. I pray that their service would be selfless and other-centered, and that for their service, you would bless them, their families, their children, and all the righteous deeds of their hands. Give them endurance and patience for this work, kindness in their interactions with one another, and success in establishing policies that are honorable and beneficial for our city. We think of our community in this moment, and we petition you on behalf of the people in our city. We pray for the poor, that you would provide for them. We pray for the lonely, that you would comfort them. We pray for the grieving, that you would turn their mourning to rejoicing. We pray for those with hard hearts, that you would make them tender. We pray for our neighbors, that you would bless them. We pray for our first responders, that you would protect them. We pray for the disenfranchised and marginalized, that they would experience your love and hospitality. We pray for the, for those leaders in this room who've been appointed to serve, that they would seek to honor you. And we continue to ask with all those who've prayed this prayer before us, that you would bless our great city, our great state, and our great country with an abundance of your grace and provision. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, thank you Henry, uh, Councilmember Wade. Vanessa, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gettle.
Present.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Present.
Vice Mayor Learman, Mayor Smith. Councilmember Manfredi, we have quorum.
Thank you. As you noticed, there's a couple people missing today. Uh, we have some people out of town, and we're missing a council member in total here. We'll be putting a new person, hopefully next week. Um, but we're, we have a quorum here, so we're gonna get on some, get some business done. First thing we're gonna talk about is proclamations, acknowledgements, awards, and presentations. And on the presentations, we have a presentation from Heinfeld and Meach, and our Finance Director, Chris, will introduce.
Good evening, members of the council. Uh, my name is Chris Everpilou. I'm the Finance Manager for the city. I'd like to introduce Christopher Heinfeld. He's our Audit Partner, um, Audit Partner for Heinfeld Meach, which is our audit, uh, firm for the last several years. He's gonna present to you a summary of our fiscal year 23 financial audit and federal single audit, as well as the, um, report on HERF and ELR expenditures. So I'd like to present to you Christopher Heinfeld.
Thank you, councilmembers, for having me here this evening, representing our firm, Heinfeld Meach and Company, to talk to you about the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFR, as well as some of the other supplemental reports that were issued for this past fiscal year. Are you, you should've all hopefully received a three-page letter that was indicated or communicated just to the city council members, to, to hopefully emphasize a few areas that occurred during this year's audit, and I'm gonna briefly touch on those during my presentation, and then really talk about the results of the fiscal year 23 audit. But first and foremost, we'd like to discuss the timeline. So our audit begins each year with the issuance of an engagement letter and the signing of that engagement letter, and that incurred in May. Then in July, we performed some preliminary onsite fieldwork procedures, in which we look at the city's internal controls, not just related to financial reporting, but also related to federal compliance, as well as start testing some of those final balances. And then when we come back in, in November to do our final fieldwork, we're really looking at those ending balances of cash and investments, other assets and receivables, as well as revenues and expenditures. We also helped the city prepare the financial statements, and provided that report to the city in January to review, as they are ultimately responsible for the preparation of those financial statements. And then that report was issued on, on February 1st of this fiscal year. Our audit is, is very encompassing. We're not doing just a financial statement audit, but we're also doing an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as uniform guidance. And in addition to these quasi-three audits that we're doing, we're also issuing compliance reports related to HERF funds, as well as the annual expenditure limitation report. So through our communications, we're required to make sure you're aware of any accounting principle changes that have occurred during this past fiscal year. The big one being Government Standard 96, and that's GASB Statement 96 relating to subscription-based information technology arrangements. It's a mouthful, we call it SPITAs. The city performed a detailed analysis over any contracts or agreements that may relate to this standard, and that may relate to different accounting. And we've reviewed that, as well as reviewed additional contracts and agreements, and determined, thankfully, that there was no impact this year on the city's financial statements. Some other information we're required to disclose to the council relates to significant estimates in those financial statements. And so the two main estimates relate to the useful lives used for depreciable capital assets, as well as the actuarial valuations used for the pension plans, and that's ASRS and PSPRS. And both those organizations handle the actual actuarial valuations and the assumptions that go into those. Each year, we do look at whether any proposed or necessary audit adjustments are needed to ensure that the financial statements are materially correct, and that users and readers of those financial statements can rely upon them. This year, we did have a few audit adjustments that we proposed, that the city agreed on, that were corrections made by management to those financial statements, to ensure that the report issued can be relied on. They primarily related to grant revenue, and just some timing differences of when revenue is recognized versus in a current or prior year. Some specific details related to these items are included in the single audit report, which we'll be discussing in a little bit, though. As I mentioned, we do help the city prepare its financial statements, and specifically that Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This is a non-audit service, along with the preparation of the Schedule of Expenditures and Federal Awards, the Data Collection Form, and the Annual ELR. These non-audit services require management to designate an individual responsible for reviewing this work, as it's not just audit work. And then, since we do have you here, I always like to communicate some, some responsibility differences, that maybe there are some misconceptions sometimes. We are responsible for performing inquiries with management, with council members, with other employees at the city regarding fraud, but the city is ultimately responsible for developing internal controls and detecting any fraud. We did not run into any issues of fraud this past year, but we do like to make sure that there is that distinction, that we do perform some procedures, but typically they are limited, and the city is ultimately responsible. Related to the financial statements as well, we provide what we call a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct and can be relied on, but we can't provide an absolute assurance in that, and management is ultimately responsible for those financial statements. Some other required, um, information here for, for members of the council. If we had any disagreements, or if the proposed audit adjustments we had, uh, management did not agree with, we'd be required to disclose those to you, but I'm happy to say there were no disagreements this past audit year. Additionally, if management was unwilling to sign any type of representation letter regarding some of the items in the financial statements, we'd be required to disclose that to you as well. And then lastly, we always assess our independence each year and every year. Uh, it's something we really take pride in, in terms of making sure we are independent when we're issuing these audit reports. All right, related to the reports that we did issue this year. So we issued what we call the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the Financial Statements, the Single Audit Report, which includes those two other audits we talked about, the Government Auditing Standards Report, as well as the Uniform Guidance Report, which is basically federal compliance, and then the two, uh, compliance reports over HERF funds and the AELR. Both those examinations for compliance on HERF and AELR reports did not note anything, and as we'll discuss here briefly, there were no items noted related to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So the report is pretty vast. It's, it's over a hundred and twenty-five pages long, and contains a lot of information, so I'm briefly gonna go over some of the key areas. The first, and what I probably say is the most important, is our Independent Auditor's Report, and that's on page 13. We're issuing what we call an unmodified opinion. That's a clean modified, that's a clean opinion. It means the financial statements can be relied upon. We feel like they are materially accurate. Page 17 starts the management discussion and analysis. This is a great section if you're looking to just look for a comparison of current year to prior year information. We then get into the basic financial statements, which contains two sets of financial statements, one on your citywide financial statements, or government-wide information, and one by individual fund, and specifically by significant fund. And then your notes to the financial statements. Your notes really provide detailed information about the financial statements. So if you wanted more information about capital assets, you'd go to the notes. Additions, deletions, purchases, disposals, any type of information like that's gonna be included in the notes. Then you have your required supplementary information, and your supplementary information, just further detail on the information in those basic financial statements. And then lastly, you have the statistical section. This is a section that contains a lot of 10-year information, so 10-year trends for financial information, for debt ratios, for revenue capacity, for economic and demographic information as well. And so a lot of readers do find this section the most useful, even though it's unaudited. So the Single Audit Report was another report we issued, and as previously mentioned, we did note one matter in terms of revenue recognition that was corrected by management, and that was included in here. But really, the big, big item in this report is going to page nine. It's a summary of the entire report. It's, it's sort of in the middle of the report. It maybe doesn't make the most sense. It probably should come after the table of contents, but any yes answer typically means there's some kind of finding attached to it. The city had basically all no answers, so no material weaknesses related to internal controls for federal compliance, no significant deficiencies. The one material weakness that we did note, that the city has subsequently corrected related to financial reporting, though. And with that, I just wanna thank everyone at the city, and specifically everyone in the, the Department of Business Administration, just for all their work. It's not easy to have three different audits done, a few different examinations of compliance done over the course of the year, and have someone digging through your records, really, scrutinizing every single transaction and decision you've made over the past year. And so if you've gone through an audit, I'm sure you're, you're aware of the process somewhat, but we really wanna thank the city, management, and everyone in that department for their hard work this past year to help us get through this. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions that, that any of the council members may have.
Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is our report from the mayor. Counsel, do you have anything to report? Councilmember Marsh?
First, I wanna thank, um, Heinfeld Meach and Company for their PowerPoint presentation. That was almost as exciting as watching Donald Trump's jury selection. I had a fairly busy month, or two weeks, since the last, um, council meeting. On April 3rd, um, several of us got together to celebrate Global Water's 20th anniversary. This city wouldn't be as big as we are today without Global Water, so it's worth celebrating. On April 9th, the Pinell County Water Augmentation Authority Board Meeting discussed bills before the legislature, planned usage of Colorado River water, and the snow levels in the Colorado Rockies. Another exciting meeting. On April 15th, the Senior Advisory Council Meeting, uh, was held. As of tonight, the Senior Advisory Council will be fully staffed. We will have brought onboard three recent council appointees, all bringing new ideas, new life experience. And with the other members and our partner organizations, we're taking on the challenge of working to reach out and support more than 10,000 seniors in Maricopa. As of this, and on this coming Friday, the Senior Center is hosting its monthly Lunch and Learn at 11:00 AM, featuring, uh, Maricopa Planning Director Rudy Lopez. So if you want lunch, register in advance, and it's five bucks. If you just want to hear Rudy's presentation, it's free. I'll see you at the Senior Center on Friday. Thanks.
Gentlemen? Well, thank you, thanks Bob. Um, I don't have anything to share today, except for, um, remembering that, um, be careful on our roads, the SR 347, or the John Wayne Parkway, of course, and all the work that's happening out there. It's, um, you know, those guys and ladies are out there working hard, so please, make sure you drive slow, and, you know, we're not hitting anybody over there. Um, also, some patience might help over there, too, because it seems everybody's going crazy these days regarding traffic. So, um, next is a report from the city manager. Um, City Manager Bitter, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. And then we have a call to the public. The call to the public, is anyone wishing to speak can come up and address the council. Please state your name for the record. I do have one speaker card, and it's not listed for any one item, so I'll call that one first. The speaker card is for Peg Chapados.
Thank you, councilmember, other councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Maricopa Cultural Activity Center, better known as Friends of the Library. As you've heard me talk about it in the past, we have an operating agreement with the City of Maricopa, and I wanna tell you that it kicked into effect last November. So from November, December, and then January, February, March, so far, we have contributed close to $3,000 to the Maricopa Library. And I wanna take this opportunity to thank my fellow FOTL members. I wanna do a big shout-out to Angela and Craig over at the library. They are absolutely phenomenal to work with. And I wanna thank the citizens of Maricopa for supporting the booknook and our book sales. Every time we have a book sale, or a special sale, just the stuff in the booknook, we're always getting donations, so thank you for those, and thanks for the support for the community. All the net proceeds come back into the library to do whatever they need to do with it, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else for their call to the public? Oh, okay, I thought that was. All right, next we have our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda allows us to, um, go through a couple things and, and put them together, but I do have a request to remove 7.5 from the Consent Agenda, and what I'll do is I'll move that to the end of the regular agenda. But, um, for the rest of the Consent Agenda, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as it sits?
Motion to approve.
Removing 7.5, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Do you need a motion to pull that? Or are you making a motion to pull that Consent Agenda item?
Oh, no, we already pulled it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's pulled off, so the rest of it, without minus 7.5, a motion to approve. We have a motion and...
And I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion passes, and we'll move on. Okay, in our regular agenda, we have 8.1. The mayor and city council shall discuss and take action on making an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Senior Advisory Committee. This is my appointment. Um, I've had a couple discussions with a couple folks, and I found somebody I think is gonna sit there and do a really good, a good job. She's actually sitting with a bunch of the people from the Senior Advisory Committee already. Um, I'd like to nominate Patty Hess to the Senior Advisory Committee. So I'll make that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Patty. Okay, next we have a public hearing. Um, it's a resolution vacating and abandoning a portion of West Honeycut Avenue. This item is also scheduled for a public hearing. Alexander Bosworth will present. So, eh, as it's a public hearing, I'm now gonna open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak can come up and speak at this item and this item only. Well, after the presentation, sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers, Manfredi and the rest of the council. My name's Alexander Bosworth, planner here with the City of Maricopa. And tonight, we have abandonment request, ABDN 24-001, for a right-of-way abandonment on West Honeycut Avenue. This is a request by the City of Maricopa to abandon a portion of right-of-way, again, on West Honeycut Ave. The abandoned portion of right-of-way will then be subsequently acquired by the adjacent property owners without compensation. For reference, this site is located on the northeast corner of John Wayne Parkway and West Honeycut Ave, as denoted in the slide before you. And per the city ordinance, a public notification was conducted in a manner that is compliant, uh, as you can see here. No public comment was received at the time of the report was written, and the notification report is also available as part of the exhibits. Uh, as per the staff findings for this abandonment, uh, staff has found that the portion of right-of-way is not part of any planned CIP project, transportation facility, or other plan. The city doesn't have any plans to improve or use this portion of right-of-way, and the existing conditions do not serve any transportation purpose at the moment. Therefore, staff will recommend approval of abandonment request, ABDN 24-001, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report, and as amended by the mayor and city council. And that concludes my presentation.
As this item is a public hearing, I'm now going to open it up to, um, anyone wishing to speak. You can come up and speak on this item and this item only. So I see no one, so I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 24-11?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and that brings us to our next, uh, public hearing. This is a, uh, another resolution abandoning a different portion of West Honeycut Avenue. It is also scheduled for a public hearing. Alex, Alexander, sorry. Alex or Alexander?
Uh, either or.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Manfredi. Just waiting on the slide to, uh, come up before us tonight. This is a abandonment request, ABDN 24-002, for North Maricopa Road and West Mercado Street. Again, this is a request by the city to abandon a portion of right-of-way on the aforementioned streets. Uh, the abandoned portion of public right-of-way will then be subsequently acquired by the adjacent property owners. As you can see in the slide before you, this is a, uh, sight map of the right-of-way in question. It's located west of the John Wayne Parkway overpass, uh, just north of the railroad tracks. And as required by the city code, public notification was conducted in a manner that is compliant. The notification report is a part of the exhibits available for, uh, the public, and we have received no public comment at this time. Staff supports this abandonment request, as it, uh, satisfies the following findings. Uh, this portion of right-of-way is, again, not part of any CIP project, transportation facility, or any other transportation studies. The city doesn't have any plans to use this portion of right-of-way in the future, and the conditions are not serving any, any, uh, transportation purpose. Therefore, staff will recommend approval of ABDN 24-002, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff memo before you, and as amended by the mayor and city council. And, uh, Councilmember Manfredi, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. As this item is also a public hearing, I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak can come up and speak on this item and this item only. I will now, oh, sorry, I won't close it yet, wait. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve 24.0, wait, yeah, 24.16?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay? And we're moving on to 8.4. 8.4 is the next is another resolution abandoning a portion of North Maricopa Road and a portion of West Mercado Street. Alex? I think I said that one by mistake earlier, so I apologize, but it was 2.4.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Manfredi. Uh, the slides that we, uh, just reviewed, uh, for Mercado Street and, uh, Maricopa Road, uh, that is this item, 8.4.
Yeah. So we did 24.16 early, is that what we did?
Correct. The first set of slides that I presented, uh, was for those first two resolutions.
Okay. And then 24.13?
It is this slide. I can go over the presentation one more time if you'd like.
Okay.
Again, this is for North Maricopa Road and West Mercado Street. Request by the city to abandon this portion of right-of-way, which will be acquired by the adjacent property owners. This site is the site for this current resolution that we are covering. There were no public comments as part of this request.
No problem.
My apologies.
Um, I think the problem was we did one, 24.13?
Correct.
First.
Correct.
And then we voted on 24.16.
That's correct.
So my fault, I made a mistake.
No worries.
Can we go over 24.16? That's the one we should need to go over that we haven't.
Correct.
It's the same piece of property, right? Okay.
Same presentation as the first slides.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
So then, the item is a public hearing for 24.13. I'll open it up to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak can come up and speak on this item and this item only. Nobody? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve 24.13? And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we have an item on the agenda as a presentation by Chief Goodman. Chief?
Good evening, Councilmember Manfredi, members of the city council. Thank you for having me here this evening for the 2023 Maricopa Police Department Annual Report. The 2023 Police Department Overview is intended to demonstrate how the department continues to support the strategic thrusts of the city council, and our role in unlocking the full potential of the city of Maricopa to create a thriving and durable community. During this presentation, I'll be providing a bit of a retrospective for 2023. That will include some numbers and statistics, some of our challenges and goals, some of our milestone achievements, some community engagement efforts, and looking ahead towards 2024. But before we do that, let's tell the story of 2023. So I thought it would be interesting to the council and to those in the audience attending here today to review the top 20 calls for service that our police officers respond to. A call for service is any officer or citizen-initiated activity called into the dispatch center. Calls associated suspicious vehicles or people, or wel, and welfare checks make up most of our calls for service, and they're a great way for our community members to report what they feel is out of place. This is great, this is a great measure of our community policing efforts, and demonstrates a high level of trust between our community members and the police department. You've probably heard me speak in the past at town halls, or coffee with a cop, or other presentations I've been involved in, about people picking up the phone and calling the police department to report things that are out of place or seem suspicious to them in their, in their, uh, developments or their communities. And this really demonstrates the power of that, and the power of the engagement of our community members in taking care of one another's and calling it, one another, and calling in those things that they think are suspicious. Now, not all call, all, not all calls for service end up with a report. In fact, only about 18% of all calls for service result in a written report. For 2023, that amounted to 5,620 reports generated by our police officers, public safety aides, park rangers, and animal control officers. That's quite a few reports for the, for the, um, for the entire year. Calls come to us in two different ways. Those are initiated by community, community members, about 65% of those, and then those are initiated by our own police officers or police department employees. or police department employees, and that's about thirty-five percent of those calls for service. So you may be asking yourself, what are the top ten calls for service from both community members and from our police officers? And this slide, it illustrates exactly that. So on the left, you'll see the top ten officer-initiated calls for service. Self-initiated activity encompasses any interactions with community members not initiated by the public or a call into the dispatch center. Self-initiated activity often involves officers patrolling through the city and witnessing something suspicious or a person they stop to talk to. The addition of the public safety aides has increased the police department's ability to address quality of life or specific crime issues within our community. And on the right side are our top ten citizen-initiated calls for service. And citizen-initiated activity is any call initiated by one of our community members or one of our community stakeholders. Our citizens are vigilant and know what is going on in our communities, and I highlighted that as part of this slide. This leads to many welfare checks and calls regarding suspicious activity. Many of the top citizen-initiated calls are handled by our public safety aides, freeing up officers to be proactive or respond to calls that are criminal in nature. So let's talk a moment about how we prioritize calls. We have five different call priority types. Priority H and then one through four. Priority H is any life-threatening call with great possibility of death or serious injury. We had none of those calls during twenty twenty-three, thankfully. Priority one is close, falls closely behind. It's any crime in progress which might result in injury, major loss of property, or immediate apprehension of a suspect. Only eleven percent of all calls, our calls for service are priority one. Priority two are minor in-progress or just accorded calls with no threat of injury or major loss, nine percent. Priority three are disputes, disturbances, alarms, property damage, collisions, et cetera. Seventy-four percent, as you might expect. And then priority four are customer service types of calls, transports and other things related to those sort of administrative calls that our officers handle. In twenty twenty-three, our dispatch center received thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-two calls for service. Of those, around forty-four hundred were diverted to the fire department. Let's talk a moment, a moment about arrests as they are sometimes natural products of calls for service. Felony arrests are detailed on the left. And all other arrests such as misdemeanors are on the right. So in total, the police department made two thousand two hundred forty-eight arrests for all of twenty twenty-three. Of those, four hundred seventy-four were felonies and one thousand seven hundred seventy-four were misdemeanors or people who were cited in the field. That averages out to around thirty-nine felony arrests per month and one hundred forty-seven misdemeanors arrest, misdemeanor arrests per month. Traffic. As Councilmember Manfredi alluded to earlier, traffic is always a top of mind for both our city staff, our community members, and of course, our council. We wrote a lot of traffic citations last year. Two thousand and five of them were for speed. Speed is the number one, speed followed by inattention play a great part in the majority of the collisions that we investigate. So folks following too closely, going too fast, unable to stop, cause rear-end collisions, and then individuals paying more attention to their cell phones than they do their driving also cause a great number of accidents. And these are things we look for when we're out doing enforcement. The police department was fortunate to secure a grant from the governor's office of highway safety to assist in our speed and traffic enforcement initiatives, which of course are driven by data, officer observation, and community input. So all those emails that I get from community members about folks speeding in their neighborhood or individuals that come up for public comment who are concerned about speed or other items in the neighborhood, we take note of those items and then I collaborate with our traffic unit in order to provide a presence in those neighborhoods so that our community members know that we're being responsive to the time that they spend here in council and the time they spend emailing me and the members of my command staff. I'd like to take a moment to touch on our specialty units, which encompass our traffic unit, our school resource officers, animal control, and our police service and our police safety aides. These numbers tell the story of how our specialty units are engaged with our community. Of a special note I'd like to make is our partnership with MUSD. Starting in twenty twenty-three, MUSD assumed full responsibility for the management of grants associated with our SROs. This took a great deal of administrative burden off of our police department, and it was taken on by the school district, and they did an amazing job in communicating with the state department of education and then coordinating with me and my command staff in reference to review of IGAs or contracts that need to be completed between the police department and the school district. They did an amazing job with that. MUSD is clearly committed to having our SROs in our school, which provides a high level of safety. And it's also provided many opportunities for relationship building between students and police department personnel and furtherance of our community policing efforts. Our SROs really set a great example in our schools and provide opportunities for our young people to build positive relationships with law enforcement officers outside of an adversarial environment, which is super important. As you can see, the traffic unit was very busy in twenty twenty-three. They issued fifty-seven percent of all traffic-related citations and responded to twenty-four percent of all traffic collisions reported in twenty twenty-three. Just to give you an idea of the level of busyness, in twenty twenty-two, they only issued thirty-five percent of all of our citations, and that was during one of their inaugural years as the traffic unit. And so now that they're really getting their footing underneath them, or their motorcycles underneath them, I guess I should say, fifty-seven percent of all traffic-related items are handled by traffic. Animal control and park rangers. Animal control is on the left and park rangers are on the right. Animal control not only addresses animal-specific calls, but also collaborates with officers in situation involving animals related to welfare checks, citizen assists, and other calls for service. This collaborative approach ensures a comprehensive response to the diverse needs of our community. And there on the right, you'll see our park rangers. They're responsible for patrolling our city of Maricopa parks, and they do an amazing job. They assist city staff of public events, they answer community questions regarding facilities. Their inner goal in educating people about our dog parks and some of the other amenities that are offered in our parks. So let's talk a minute about twenty twenty-three and finish up the story. In January of twenty twenty-three, I was honored to be selected as the police chief for the Maricopa Police Department. And one of the first things that I did was execute a one hundred and eighty-day plan, a six-month plan to, um, to get a gauge on where we were as a law enforcement agency. And in so doing, I met with every single department employee, both sworn and professional staff. We set some small goals together. We set expectations and set ourselves up for success. And we started to capitalize on that momentum. We also identified some immediate needs in collaboration with then-city manager Rick Horst, who gave us funding for some technology items, specifically Axon in-car camera systems. Our officers were already equipped with body worn cameras, and the in-car cameras, they sort of complete the picture. Because before, when I would look at body worn camera footage while our people were responding to calls, I got some great footage of how our people handle steering wheels, talk on the radio, and make adjustments as they're driving the calls for service. Now I get a much more complete picture. I actually have a rather good view of what they're actually responding to, and it paints a much clearer picture, not only to me and my command staff when we're reviewing things, it also paints a much clearer picture for community members who may be interested in reviewing camera footage. We build on a solid foundation. Let me be clear when I say that our command staff, our existing command staff, did a great job of building a solid foundation, and some of them are seated behind me and deserve credit for all the hard work they did prior to my coming on as the chief. We did some like, what I like to call cultural remodeling. We emphasize the department culture of fairness, accountability, and inclusiveness. We conducted policy review and furtherance of twenty-first century policing. One of the goals was to establish and build relationships and engage and let people know what we do. And so we did this through many, many visits and many, many meetings with the community. I did several town halls, and my staff also engaged with the community through Coffee with a Cop, Cops and Cones, Pizza with, and Pizza with the Police, just to name a few. The Cops and Cones event was very successful. We had close to two hundred fifty people through the redwood room in the library in a ninety-minute period. That speaks volumes about how engaged this community is with their police department. And Pizza with the Police wasn't too far behind. We nearly ran out of pizza, and had it not been for a group of high schoolers that came out and wiped me out at the end, I would have actually had half a pizza to take back to my officers at the police station. Let's talk about some more, some more of our twenty twenty-three accomplishments as our story continues. In twenty twenty-three, we enjoyed a ten percent reduction in overall crime per capita. We collaborated with other city departments. Then-city manager Rick Horst and now-city manager Ben Bitter and the rest of the executive team challenged us to break down silos and to work more efficiently and more effectively with our partner departments throughout the city. And I think that's exactly what we did. We collaborated with the communications team for lunch and learn, town hall meetings. We did neighborhood watch meetings led by Jim DiVinese. He's sitting right here to my right. He did an amazing job with those. We collaborated with many other city departments to develop a more efficient and more tra, and more, um, a more effective traffic plan for the Fourth of July celebration. You can see how many people came out for the Pocana Park Pumpkin Walk. I thought it was a great success, and I'm honored to have been able to participate. The Wild West Music Fest was successful with no major calls for service, no arrests, which is notable for an event of its size. And we also collaborated with our city leadership team for the Citizen Leadership Academy, which, as you know, gives people an in, uh, an idea of the inner workings of the city. Most importantly, I think, of our accomplishments might be the staffing and enhanced recruitment process that our staff members came up with in collaboration with HR in order to fill the many vacancies that we had in the police department. We had at least fourteen vacancies in the police department in January of twenty twenty-three. We now have two. That's an amazing accomplishment considering the number of vacancies in police departments, not only in the state of Arizona, but also throughout the United States, and speaks volumes to the teamwork that attracts quality individuals to the city of Maricopa. The police department partnered with our human resources department, and we created a streamlined and efficient hiring process for police department personnel. Five hundred eighty people applied for police officer positions in twenty twenty-three. Of that, we hired eighteen. We also hired two public safety aides, a civilian investigator, and three dispatchers. This has bolstered our capacity to be community guardians and serve the public, directly supporting job creation and business development as well as enhancing public safety and quality of life in alignment with the strategic thrusts of the city council. So what's next for twenty twenty-four? We're going to continue to enhance our service model. We may take a look at moving towards service area policing, which essentially will divide the city into different quadrants with my patrol division lieutenants being responsible for each of those quadrants and having teams of officers responsible for addressing quality of life issues within those geographical areas. We're going to look to enhance workforce productivity by leveraging our PSA program to further increase efficiencies. We use data regularly to identify areas of public safety crossover to understand underlying issues and be proactive in addressing and preventing these issues. A good example of that is code enforcement. Some of our data suggests that our calls for code enforcement are closely related to our police calls for service. And so I've been working with George Berger, who you may be familiar with, who works under our public safety umbrella, and trying to identify some of those data trends so that we can be more effective and even proactive in addressing those items and keeping our city looking neat and tidy. We are in the midst of implementing online reporting. No promises, but I'm hopeful it'll happen in the summer months. We really want to try to get it right the first time so that we roll out a quality product for our community members, which will include the ability for our community members to call our dispatch center, have a conversation with one of our dispatchers, have that call screened, and if it's eligible for online reporting, be sent an actual text message link by which they can click on and make a police report and get a case number so they can go about their day and interact with their insurance company or their credit card company or whatever may be needed. We're looking forward to transitioning into new police department building. That didn't happen by accident and didn't happen without the support of this council and the executive leadership team. Thank you very much for your overt support of the police department and allowing us to have a new police building. We're going to continue to attract and retain talent and be that destination workplace that is all based in culture. And that culture is supported by the men and women who do the job each and every day and also by our command staff that create a culture within the police station that is supportive of our employees. And enhance training for police department and personnel. I'd like to focus on career development so that our personnel are prepared not only for today, but also the challenges of tomorrow. I'd like to explore creating a community relations unit that has a dedicated mission of outreach to our community members, our neighborhood watch, our HOAs, and our, uh, our residents in order to see what's super important to them and then address those, uh, those things head-on. And then we may consider creating a unit to be responsive to crime trends. Safety and a feeling of safety. I'd like to quote Mayor Nancy Smith by saying, "Safety is more than just statistics. It's the peace of mind we enjoy, the comfort of knowing our families are protected, and the confidence we have in our community's well-being." And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Councilmember Gettle?
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Chief Goodman, allow me to be the first just to congratulate you on a stellar twenty twenty-three. An amazing, uh, report, and it just speaks volume of the quality of men and women that you have under your stewardship and leadership. So we appreciate everything that you do and bring to our city and our community. Um, public safety is a, is a topic of mine that is near and dear to my heart, and there's so much that, um, public safety plays into our economic development, our quality of life, everything is really dependent upon your men and women and what they do in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ten percent reduction in crime, that's phenomenal. Thank you for bringing that to, to bear. And the fact that we had over five hundred, well, five hundred and eighty applicants for our position speaks volumes of the department that you have built this previous year. So thank you again for all of that. Um, I have a little bit of a question, and maybe you can help me understand a little bit of our relationship with the county. On our arrests statistics, you quote here about thirty-nine felony arrests on average throughout the course of the year. There's been a few maybe higher-profile arrests that have been in our news media over the last ninety, hundred days or so, where it seems to be some repeat offenders that have come back into our community. And so, um, could you just talk to me a little bit about our relationship with the county? And if we have any concerns there and what that relationship looks like? I'm, I'm concerned that we do our job, we arrest these individuals, we bring them over to the county, and I, it seems like they're in our community a lot sooner than I would think that they should be. Before you answer that too, I also want to state that there's a fine line that we have to be so careful to, to maintain between civil rights and our freedoms versus our safety. In finding that balance, we have to really be careful on the alleged victims versus also, or the alleged perpetrators versus our victim rights too. So keeping all that in mind, would you just kind of speak a little bit to our relationship with the county? And if you do see a problem with some of the things that have been happening here recently?
Sure. So thank you for your question. Thank you for your kind words, Councilmember Gettle. I meet about quarterly with county attorney Kent Volkmer. And we discussed the kinds of things that you discussed during your question. And I have a great relationship with county attorney Volkmer. But more importantly, our staff has a really good relationship with his attorneys. our staff has a really good relationship with his attorneys that day in and day out prosecute the crimes that we bring them each day for consideration. They do an amazing job balancing those rights that you speak of, and it is, uh, it is Attorney Volkmer's intent to keep people in custody as long as possible, when appropriate, based upon the totality of circumstances and the prosecution needed in each individual case.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Do you see any concerns with, um, early releases or too-low set bails, those kinds of issues?
I think that County Attorney Volkmer has a really good handle on addressing those issues, and while I don't want to speak for him, I know he's been proactive in advocating for keeping the residents of Maricopa and Penal County as safe as possible.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that feedback.
Councilmember Wade?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. How are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you, Councilmember.
I agree, uh, with my, my desk mate here that, uh, that is a stellar report, outstanding effort on the part of, uh, your department. And of course, everything does start atop the, the, um, emphasis that you showed when you came into the community, first came into the community, that you would be a part of the community, was admirable, and has been, has come to task. You volunteered to task, and I appreciate that very much. Uh, I'm, I'm curious, though, from a, a, um, uh, a community effort where it comes to diversity and inclusion, um, how do the numbers fare out in that? When you, when you add that, 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 uh, issue to the numbers, how does that number, how do those numbers pan out? And are we in fact looking at diversity and inclusion as something that's a long-term situation, or is there a program within the department that is addressing that issue and to bring it back to the community?
So thank you for your question, Councilmember Wade. I'll answer it in two different ways. It's a two-pronged question. First, I'd like to address diversity in hiring. The, the police department serves a very diverse community here in Maricopa, and we do our absolute best to hire candidates that are reflective of that diversity. And I'll point towards a recent academy graduation, where we graduated four people from the academy, and three of those four people were women, and two of those three women were minorities. And so we are always looking for qual, the best qualified candidates who also are representative of our community. Thanks for asking about, uh, about diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to make sure that our policing is free of bias. And so in order to do so, our officers need to be properly trained, mainly in implicit bias, because we all have implicit biases, and it's important to be cognizant, cognizant of those biases. So you may have seen me, I know that, um, we were together at a meeting that was recently held by the Maricopa Black Chamber of Commerce, and the guest speaker was Ms. Ocean Kent, and she did a great job presenting some, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion instruction to the, uh, people in attendance at that meeting. But what you may not know is that I've been working with Ms. Kent to have some of her curriculum potentially certified by Arizona Post, and also by a much larger, um, sort of accrediting body that certifies police training, and I'm eager to see what the result of that accrediting process may be for potentially some future training for Maric, not only Maricopa officers, but also other law enforcement officers throughout Penal County.
Thank you. And then just finally, a shout-out to the SROs. Now, I have a, a high schooler, freshman high schooler that has been exposed to the SROs his entire time in education here in Maricopa. And whenever we've had to have any interaction, any contact, or what have you, with the SROs, it's been very positive, very professional, and, um, warm at times. Uh, sometimes it can't be that way because people don't conduct themselves as well, but I found it firsthand, it's personal experience, that the SROs within the MUSD take their jobs serious, and they take consideration for our children serious as well. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your kind words.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Marsh?
Chief, I want to congratulate you and your whole department for a great 2023, and I'm really looking forward to next year's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
No, you already went. Councilmember Gettle has another question. Go ahead.
Freddie, please. Not, not so much a question, just a statement that I failed to make earlier. You have a very ambitious 2024. I'm excited to see that. And I just wanted to publicly state, if it wasn't ardently clear, that I am an undying supporter of your department, and if there's anything that I can do to help you move that agenda for 2024 forward, um, please make sure that you let me know where, where we can help support you. Um, please convey our, our congratulations and our, um, just full-heart gratitude to the men and women on your department for their service. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate it.
I'm last. That's pretty fun. Um, thank you so much. You know, you guys do a great job for us. Um, just to reiterate, the 10% per capita drop in crime, you know, a lot, a lot of times you read stories and you read them on the newspapers or the websites or social media, and you see a crime, and you're like, oh my God, crime's going up in Maricopa. The reality is what we, what, what is reported, um, and what we read here in the city of Maricopa probably would never be reported in Phoenix, Tempe, Glendale, Gilbert, and every other city around. You know, our crime that we report, people see it, and they're like, oh my God, I, it's getting so bad. But the reality is, it's worse in other places, a lot of other places, and some of the stuff you see here is minor and not even reported elsewhere. You know, the fact that we didn't have many calls at all for serious felony crimes, what was it, level what?
It's, uh, Priority H.
Priority H. We had zero calls last year. Um, that's, you know, good for our city, and it's, you know, we have a good city and a good place to live, and I think the quality of life here is good, and that's what, you know, our council is always looking forward to, um, working with our police department to do. Also, a lot of people, um, question, and it's a question for you, um, with all the new building that happens, and all the houses are going up, and all the apartments, and everything that's happening here in the city of Maricopa, and the growth we're seeing, is the police force keeping up with that growth? And I know you've mentioned that the hiring and the people applying and all of that, but I just wanted to reiterate it for the people that might be listening, um, that, or ask if it's keeping up with the growth that we're seeing. Thank you.
So that's a great question. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Manfredi. One of my biggest challenges as the police chief is to right-size our department based upon development. There's no special formula I can look at, there's no matrix, there's no, there's no magic ball that I can look to and say, well, if we have this many residents, and I'm going to need this many police officers. Rather, I use data to drive those decisions. And I use data from a bunch of different sources, and I do heavily depend upon, um, George Berger over in our Public Safety Department. He does an amazing job of providing me with data that I can't even think about generating on my own. He is such an integral member of our team, and he's able to help me make those projections. I also work a lot with Rudy's team on the Development Services side to try to do a little prediction to see what might be coming to town, and then what if we already have in town that's maybe similar, and then try to make some interpolations based upon that. All this I do under the, um, with the background of fiscal responsibility for the city, because I don't want to be so big that we're unnecessarily burdensome on our bud, on our budget, but at the same time, I want to have a number of officers that are, it's appropriate so that we can address things effectively and efficiently for our community members.
And are we on, at the right, um, level right now where we should be for the city based on the population and the people we have, and the crimes that are happening, and the type of crimes? So where is the police department right now?
So we're doing well on staffing. As I alluded to earlier, we only have, uh, two open positions. Now, we have a handful of people that are in training right now.
Right.
And so until those people are able to obtain what I call solo-beat officer status, they're still paired up with one of our more experienced officers. But this summer, I'm happy to report that we will be looking at a picture that represents pretty much a fully-staffed police department with a couple of minor exceptions, and that allows us to try to do things like create community relations units, or potentially expand a traffic unit, or to add to our Criminal Investigations Division, which, by the way, I just did this last week, to increase our capacity to do some of that really valuable detective work that's tied into those prosecutions with our county attorney's office. So hopefully I answered your question. I cannot give you a exact number.
No, it's perfect.
That is correct, but, um, I think that we are definitely moving in the right direction.
Chief, thank you. Any other questions? We're good? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Earlier in our meeting, we, we taped, we, we pushed 7.5 out of our consent agenda and moved it to end of our meeting today, where we are right now. 7.5 on our agenda is the city council shall discuss and possibly take action on approving a loan to Benjamin Bitter in an amount not to exceed $650,000, which shall be paid back over 30 years with a fixed annual interest rate calculated based on the city's current investment rate of return, plus one-half of percent, and authorizing the mayor to execute a, the final loan document and deed of trust as approved by the city attorney's office. This is for discussion and action, and Councilmember Wade, what questions did you have?
Thank you, uh, Councilman Manfredi. Yeah, I, I pulled this, uh, from the consent agenda so that we could have some transparent dialogue. That was the whole purpose, understanding that we have agreements with, uh, the city manager. Uh, those agreements are put in place by our legal office, and we follow by those agreements as they have been stipulated. But I felt that it was important to the community that it be open enough for discussion. Um, Dennis, do you have anything that you want to, want to add to that?
No, Councilmember Wade, I can start off. That, that, that's exactly correct. This is just bringing forward or working through our employment agreement that we have with, uh, City Manager Bitter, and part of that was to deal with the issue of, uh, the, um, dramatic change in really mortgage prices since he had purchased his house in Queen Creek. And so, under the employment agreement that council had approved, there was a recognition that this was going to be an issue, there was also a recognition that the parties would continue, uh, to try to deal with that issue and, and, uh, talk about negotiating an agreement to assist, uh, the city manager with recovering the difference. Such negotiations may include but not be limited to the city financing a loan, buying down the interest rate, or other options mutually agreeable to employer and employee. I know you guys don't want to see me do math, so I won't. Um, but Matt's here. We analyzed this to try to figure out would it be most cost-effective for the city to buy down the interest rate or not. I think Matt will tell you, uh, what the conclusion was, and that's what the authority we're looking for tonight, is to go forward, uh, so that we can finalize, uh, promissory note and deed of trust, uh, so that the city manager would be in a position to close on a house when he's in that position.
Yeah. Members of council, thank you for the questions, Councilmember Wade in particular. Really, when we analyze the situation here, uh, first, we use the rate of return. Uh, we spoke about the ACFIR earlier in this meeting. The FY23 rate of return on the city's investments was 2.88%. Adding a half point, as discussed in this agenda item here, would make that rate a 3.38% rate of return if the city were to execute this, uh, on our own behalf. Okay? Buying down points in this market is exceedingly more expensive than looking at arrangement of this nature. Additionally, if we were to look at the rates of return on the city investments in a longer-term perspective than just the one year, the five-year rates of return are about 1.55% and an all-time rate of return of 1.17%, so a 3.38% rate of return on these funds, uh, is a far more beneficial financial arrangement for a city, uh, than it would be to let somebody else manage the loan, uh, or to try and buy down points in this environment. So it is a benefit to all parties involved that the arrangement be considered in this fashion.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Matt.
And I, just to close the loop here, adding the half point to the city's rate of return actually creates a higher interest rate than the city manager currently paying now, so, but he's, and the negotiations agreed to accept that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My intention was made as far as, uh, wanting to make a transition.
Councilmember Gettle?
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi, and thank you, Matt, for your report, and, and Dennis also for your input there. And I think it's important for the people also to understand that as a council, we've made it a decision that our city manager does need to live in our community. It's very difficult to have an engaged and responsive city manager if they're not a part and deeply invested in what's happening here. So we've made that part of a stipulation of his employment, and allowing him to have this option to, uh, to be able to find a house that is affordable and allow his family to come and, and join our community, I think is really important for that to be able to happen. So I'm grateful to see it here.
So I'd like to move to, um, hope that we, that, I can, 7.5 be adopted.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And we have no executive session today, so that concludes our meeting tonight, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.